Can everybody hear me? Okay, let's uh we can get started. For tonight's special meeting of the city council, I will call the meeting to order and I'll start out with the talking about some meeting logistics and I'll just mention to people, we have always have the agenda posted on the city's webpage and if you're subscribing to the city manager's weekly updates, you will also get that and we also have printed copies on the table by the side of the room. Anyone who's appearing remotely, please indicate your change your name on your display to your first and last name. Anyone who speaks, please indicate by stating your name and where you live. We pursue into our rules of conduct. We ask that you keep your comments to two minutes and councillor Bate will assist us with the with timekeeping. Anyone who speaks must be called on by the chair and please keep your comments pertinent to the the matter we're discussing. We'll start by first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda is does anyone know of any changes to tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. And I will start with the recognizing people in the room. Steve Whitaker, you're standing up, so I'm guessing you're seeking to be recognized.
Yes, there are not any agendas over here on the side of the room to correct the chair. So therefore I couldn't speak up ahead of time to ask anything be removed from the consent agenda because I was not able and there's not one in the book packet that says it's a packet. So precision is important, especially when it affects people's rights to speak to and or remove things from the consent agenda. I want to flag the fact that we've spent probably over a hundred thousand dollars on Chad Bean not working and I just made the connection to the fact that the union contracts for our police and fire were swept through on a consent agenda with no opportunity for discussion. So the fact that you're squandering the public's tax dollars, paying somebody to not come to work while you know, under fear of threat of litigation is really not of service to the community. The trash continues to overflow. The snow plowing is leaving like the handicap spot in front of the Kellogg Hubbard Library is half full of snow. Many of the snow debris from the plow, large chunks, more than a foot of ice that could damage automobiles are left in the road. This is not okay. This is irresponsible. It's not what we're paying for in tax dollars. So I really wonder if we don't need a system of somebody to check and and report this stuff back because apparently none of y'all notice it and it shouldn't be left to me to come here and run around town and take photos of the the garbage overflowing and the you know, the public works failures and have you all just yawn and you know, say that it's par for the course. I also want to call to the question, I understand you may be running for mayor and the fact that when I raised serious issues about the accountability of the money that the city money that goes to Good Samaritan and the theft and the sexual assaults that were going on there and you just said, I find no merit to any of it and swept it under the rug. Similarly, you are on the police review commission and the killing Chad Bean of Mark Johnson where there was clear records in the dispatch system that this person was suicidal, hallucinating, off his meds, unstable, wanted to jump off the bridge and he was well beyond the distance of any marksman with a pistol. So Chad Bean was not under threat and we shot him and killed him and you swept that under the rug without proper airing. Those are festering issues in this community with trust and leadership. And it's not okay to have people who sweep things under the rug, take a leadership. It's time to start putting this city on a healing process and that means less corruption and coverups going on. I'm a little too angry to proceed with the rest of my two minutes.
Thank you. Anybody else inside the room looking to be recognized? I don't see anybody. And anyone joining us online? I do not see any hands raised, but I'll just pause for a moment to see. Okay, unless someone speaks out, I will move to the next item on the agenda, which is consent agenda and we have nothing on the consent agenda. Moving to item six, the Country Club Road presentation. And that's where we are.
Great, thank you, Mr. Council President. I'm going to quickly turn this over to our project team, which is plenty, our community development specialist Josh Jerome, our community, our communications specialist coordinator Evelyn Prim, Recreation Director Arnie McMullin and from White and Burke, Stephanie Clark. So I don't know what and I would just, well, and I think tonight's presentation is basically to outline the findings on the site and then lay out the next future steps. So it's not really, it's meant to be more of a site specific update than it is to be full discussion on the future uses that we've got sessions coming. So that I'll turn it over to Josh.
You probably need to be on top of the mic more.
Stephanie is going to handle the beginning of the presentation here and she is online.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay in the room?
I can, yes.
Great. And hopefully everyone remotely can too. Callie might be the only one I can see. So hi, Callie. Thanks for nodding. Okay, great. With me tonight, I also have Brad Ketterling from VHB. If you want to wave Brad. And from Black Rivers Design, we have Mike Viti and Jim Drummond, both available to answer questions once we get into things a little bit more. Questions on the site findings. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and have some slides to go through so we can kind of all be on the same page. Very excited to be here tonight. It is the culmination of a lot of work and the, as you know, a lot of history over the last several months where we've been deep in the weeds on the site planning and due diligence. Tonight, we're going to go through an update on the process. I want to tell you where we've been and where we are and where we're going, just a reminder to some, but education to others. Recap the fall community conversations we had. Josh is going to give you some data on housing and we'll explain that a little more and recap the the site due diligence findings, which I know everyone's anxious to hear more about all the due diligence we we've done. And then lastly, we're going to preview this, the tight site test sketches, the opportunities and constraints plans, which as Bill had mentioned, this is a preview leading into what's forthcoming, as you saw in your packet. We're having a series of public meetings and creating a full court press of education, community education around these sketches to encourage the conversation and gather input. And so tonight is not the night for deep diving into the actual sketches, but more of a process update and a site update and then kind of letting you know about these next steps. And we hope that we're happy to answer questions about all of those and we hope that everyone who's at this meeting can join us for some of the community meetings. So just to review the process where we've been, the community, the city acquired the property in the spring and there were community conversations begun back then. We picked up the consulting team was hired in September and we continued those community conversations through the fall. Concurrently, we worked on the due diligence studies and the analyses and that concluded in about December. We're now in the winter stage evaluating the opportunities and constraints with a series of public meetings and opportunity, different opportunities for input. Then this work is going to continue into the spring with concept planning and more public meetings. This is going to be a new set of plans for the community to respond to and following that we're going, that's when the council is going to need to make a decision to put forward the the chosen plan so that the team can put together what's called an actionable master plan. And that will have a set of recommendations for more due diligence, more opportunities for input. And please note, this is not a final land plan as many factors are subject to change based on the due diligence that is found in those future phases. What I want to note about process here, because process is important, is that we know time is of the essence. Funding is available now that may not be available forever. We know that there are needs right now, very significant needs right now. However, we are also following a process to maintain transparency, to be inclusive of as many perspectives as possible and to ensure the best practices of following due diligence. So that means that development is still a few years away. And I just say that so that it sets the understanding for the community that this isn't happening tomorrow. So in this, in the fall process, what we heard was that an inclusive and transparent process is paramount. So to meet people where they are, I just wanted to give you a quick summary of all the different ways that during this phase stage where we're getting into some of the testing and opportunities and constraints and the use of the site itself. We are trying to find as many stakeholders as possible. As I said, there are meetings coming up. Those meetings are on the 28th, the second of February and the ninth of February. There is a Polco link on the website that people can go to to register or to to state their interest in attending. It is not required to register, but we are encouraging the community to do that so we can gauge attendance, make sure we have enough space for everybody. We've we've created an educational poster that's going to be posted around town in civic and public places. There's a handout being distributed at, there was one handout distributed at the first farmer's market, notifying people of the opportunities for input and also another going to be distributed, distributed at this weekend's farmer's market. The educational poster and paper copy of the survey will be distributed with Meals on Wheels deliveries. We've also created a video. It's a five minute video, very short as could possibly be to be available on the website on the YouTube, city's YouTube channel. By the end of the week, this will be posted describing the property and the opportunities and the questions to the public, sending the public to the survey in particular. Because we understand that this meetings are not for everyone. That is some of the feedback we heard. The poll, the survey is going to be using Polco, which the city has used before. There's a link on the website. There will be a QR code on the print materials that will be open through the 17th of February and is intended to gather input from a range of people. Josh will be featured on Vermont Viewpoint on WDEV with Pat McDonald on January 24th at 9:00 AM. We are going to have the plans physically located up at City Hall, the library and the rec center. And then updates will regularly go out via the recreation and Montpelier Live newsletters as well as the site specific, this project specific newsletter, which people can sign up for if they haven't already on the Facebook, on the Montpelier website, they can sign up for the newsletter. We will continue to post on Facebook, Front Porch Forum and the Bridge. There's a January Bridge article coming out by Bill focusing on this project and leading into the public engagement meetings. I take a quick breath here. So it's a lot of ways to get involved. We encourage everybody to spread the word as much as possible. Please share the video on social media. Please get others to take the survey or to attend a meeting or watch or watch the video. With that said, I'd like to talk a little bit about the fall process and explain some of what we found. There were several meetings conducted, public meetings, stakeholder meetings, butter meetings. We received many emails, had many conversations and we also surveyed the Montpelier business community as well as the Montpelier High School students. Eighty-three high school students responded to a survey, giving their opinion about this as well. And these were some of the findings, but not surprisingly, the top three priorities identified were housing, recreation and environmental sensitivity. The top planning concerns among most stakeholders were transportation and site access. And the top procedural concern was ensuring an inclusive and transparent process. So because housing is such a top priority, we wanted to give a little more data for the council to consider. Ultimately, you will be the ones making the decision to direct the land plan, the actionable master plan that will indicate housing types. So we wanted to make sure council had what it needed in order to make the kind of decision that needs to be made about housing product. So Josh can speak to this more and I will handle the slides.
Great. Thanks, Stephanie. I think it's no surprise to anybody who's paying attention that Montpelier is an aging community, just like a lot of communities around the state. You can see the fastest growing age cohort is sixty-five to seventy-four years old according to ACS estimates. All of this data is ACS. It's not decennial twenty-twenty data, which will be a little more accurate and the next data trunched to be released will be this coming May. So we'll have some better, some better data to go off from the spring. But we're an aging community. Next slide. And so what's important to also recognize is we're an aging community and the average household size continues to decrease over the last few decades. Nineteen seventy-four, the average size was almost four. Now, Montpelier's average size is one point nine. So you have an aging population, not as many people living in the housing stock that's available. Next slide. And so this shows the mismatch of housing stock that we have. Studios, one bedrooms, two, three, four, five and more compared to the household size of our community. Where five percent of our household size is actually one person households. Although less than ten percent of our housing stock is studio. Let's, I think it's twenty-one percent is studio and one bedroom. So there's a real mismatch on that. The younger professional end who's a single person needing a space. There's not a lot of options out there for them and on the opposite end where you have the elders of our community. You might have one or two people in a house with four or five bedrooms. So there's a mismatch. And again, this is very common in communities throughout, you know, the northeast Vermont. We're an overbuilt community because we're not having the large families that we once were. Next slide. And we're not keeping up with producing enough housing stock in Montpelier. This, this next slide slows, shows the rate of change in the housing supply, which has diminished greatly since nineteen, since the nineteen eighties. According to ACS estimates is picked up a little bit since 2010, but again, we'll have some better numbers come this, the spring from the census. But still, it's not enough. It's not enough of new units being created. Excellent. And real estate transactions in our community continue to rise. The average single family residence sold in two thousand twenty-two was almost four hundred thousand dollars as opposed to in twenty eighteen. It was about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So we've seen a dramatic increase in in single family residence cost as well as multifamily residences. Two, two unit multifamily residences average about four hundred and twenty-six thousand. But once you get beyond four, five, six, seven units, those, those costs escalate up to over a million dollars. Next cost. And this, this slides are really important because this shows what affordability is in this community for renters and for homeowners. So you know, anybody paying more than thirty percent of their gross income on their household expenses is not considered to be affordable and based on census data. It shows that over thirty-five percent of Montpelier's renters are in unaffordable renting situations. And likewise, homeowners also about sixteen percent are in unaffordable situations. This data is, is, is old. It's still only twenty sixteen to twenty twenty ACS estimates. No doubt that these numbers are probably higher and right now in twenty twenty-three. So something to really focus on is how do we become a more affordable community for renters and for homeowners? And these are, this is all the housing slides in points that we wanted to make right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Thank you. So moving from the housing data, the following slides before I I get to them are all on the website. And I understand that these might be small images, especially for people in the room. So these are all on the website for further review when this meeting concludes.
Stephanie, can you tell that you're frozen?
Okay, I'm back. So everyone can hear me okay? All right. Sixteen years in this business, that has never happened. I am so sorry. I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding that I am human and in Burlington. And I was just telling Josh before this that I was hoping that F thirty-fives weren't going to cause interference and here we are. So thank you so much for your patience. I'm going to load up my screen here and we'll pick up where we left off. So as I was saying, the due diligence phase, we were in the process of talking about the findings. So these, these plans, again, these plans will be on the website tomorrow that you can see in bigger detail, but VHB environmental scientists performed both an evaluation of existing online mapping maintained by A and R as well as field in winetaries in September and October of twenty twenty-two for various natural resources, including wetlands, streams, rare plant species and natural communities. These studies determined that a variety of natural resources are present within the project parcel, including wetlands and intermittent perennial streams and are subject, that are subject to state and federal jurisdiction. Streams generally flow from north to south, draining to the Winuski River. And the largest wetland features are located in the steep and forested southern, southern portion of the parcel, some distance from the areas being evaluated for potential development that we'll get into next. No rare, threatened and endangered plant species were observed with only one uncommon plant species mapped in one of the forested, the forested wetland features. Streams and wetlands and their respective state regulated buffers are shown on the natural resources map, which is in front of you now called existing conditions and are included as the underlays on the sketches where we're going to see. Additionally, soil mapping indicates there are primary agricultural soils here. They underlie much of the project area, including most of the former golf course area there in the yellow. The traffic assessment also conducted by VHB evaluated access, traffic volumes and the and transit determined that there is adequate capacity at the US two intersection with Country Club Road, but that with any significant development, a signal will be warranted. This study also identified the well-known issue of limited access and poor accessibility. And the traffic and access, we identify as something we'll need to put forward in the recommendation for phase two to be studied more carefully. Once there's a desired development plan in place. The archaeological assessment was conducted by Crown Consulting. Six sites were identified within the undisturbed wooded sections and along the southern margins of the golf course. And then the existing building itself, the clubhouse that's shown here on the plan was assessed by Black River Design and they found that it was in good shape and could be reused with some limitations, for example, low ratio of exterior wall surface to floor area and some limited headroom. That's as much as I'm going to go into tonight, but all of those studies can be found in the city council packet on the website that will also be within the on this, the Country Club Road page for anyone to review and a summary of that has been in the memo that we provided to council. The buildable areas map that's also within the packet and on the website highlights the notable opportunities and constraints for development of any kind. This is overlaid on top of the natural resources, but it really highlights where there can be development, where there can't be development and what kind of limitations there are in each of these nodes. So that brings us to the question for winter twenty twenty-three. This is the question for the public, knowing the site feature limitations now and the community's identified needs. How would you lay out the site? So we, we have prepared some test sketches is what they're called. This is, at this stage of the process, we're starting with looking at housing and recreation. Those are the most land intensive uses. There, the feedback that we got in the fall was that varying types of housing was desired, varying types of recreation was desired. We are showing in these sketches, two kind of extremes, one being maximum housing, one being maximum recreation and showing something on the spectrum in between. And we're starting here because we want to gather feedback and direction about the scale, what to include and what to accommodate and start envisioning the massing on the site. We, because of the way we're doing this process, we can't presume to know what the desire of the community would be. So we know that this is, these, these sketches are not exhaustive. They do not address all of the features that are going to be needed to be included on the actual master plan. They don't address wildlife corridors or full connection to abutting properties or solve the transportation issues. But because this is an iterative process, those will depend on the direction from this particular stage. So test A is maximum housing. This shows a mix of a lot of different types of housing product. Three and five story multifamily, triplexes, single family, some on smaller lots, some on larger lots. This limits the recreation to really the two wooded eastern and western areas. And some light recreation can occur in the stream and wetland buffers. But maximum housing is going to produce approximately five hundred and thirteen units. The next test shows the other end of the spectrum. What if it was entirely recreation? Absolutely no new housing. Approximately three hundred thousand square feet of fields. A cluster of recreation buildings, new and the conversion of the existing totaling around sixty-six thousand square feet. Some hillside recreation and preservation and use of those natural areas to the east and west. And then somewhere kind of on that spectrum is what we're calling the balanced housing and recreation plan test C, which shows that it could possibly accommodate between a hundred and seventy to two hundred and thirty units. Depending on if you went up three stories or five stories. Shows a mix of multifamily, triplexes, single family, approximately a hundred and twenty square feet of fields. A cluster of recreation buildings, new and a conversion of existing, again totaling about sixty-six thousand square feet. Some smaller hillside recreation and the preservation of those two eastern and western nodes. So again, these are not final concepts. This is an order of magnitude exercise to gain an understanding of the community's desired direction, not a decision for these particular land uses. While these address some of the community's concerns, such as the existing, many people said they wanted to see the existing developed areas be used for future development. And we show some areas where you could connect to abutting properties. The future concepts will need to take into account more design considerations like view sheds, wildlife corridors, reuse of those walking paths, the more granular. And it's not known if we can meet all of these desires, but the design team will attempt to show the various impacts and accommodations required to get to those desired outcomes. So we have a variety of questions for the public that we're going to be putting out there in the video as well as capturing some of these in the survey. We hope that folks will participate and get us their opinions and um and get us their feedback on these plans through all the various channels we previously discussed. So please, my ask is that you encourage others to visit the website, to look at the materials, to take the survey, come to one of our meetings. And with that, I'll stop so we can get to questions. I can leave my screen up. Um, or I can take it down so that we can see each other. It's up to the will of the council.
Thanks, Stephanie. We can start with members of the council. Do we have uh questions? I don't think we, you you want it up or down? There we go.
Okay.
Donna, were you raising your hand to go first? Okay. Anybody, I um, oh. Oh, sorry. First, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, um, so, um, thank you. Sorry, that, thank you for all this. Um, it's very comprehensive. And so I'm looking at the different test plans and you've got the one that's maximizing housing, the one that's all all recreation, the one that's a balance. Um, I'm wondering just in general how the public input that you've received so far informs the development of these test plans. So, um, for instance, the you we've got one here that's all recreation, where there are folks who were advocating for that. Was that a strong message that you got from the public that maybe it should be all recreation or all housing or vice versa? And so just I I wanted to know how what you heard from the public that made it into these test plans.
Gotcha. Yeah, great question. Um, no, there were a few people that said no development whatsoever, no um housing development or, you know, any kind of big physical footprint. Um, and there were people who said they really wanted as much housing as possible. So there were a few opinions. I would not say that those represented the the majority of opinions by any means. But the purpose of showing kind of when people, when there's people that have said we really want housing and we really want recreation, some have been stronger on one, stronger on another. We wanted to show what those compromises will be. If you really want more housing, this is what you might be giving up in terms of recreation. If this is what you want for recreation, this is how much housing you might be giving up. So it was a way to kind of put um a um a contrast in front of people for them to understand kind of the different trade offs because it's not an infinite site. So I I would say to answer your question more directly, we got opinions on the entire spectrum. Most people, I would say, were more centered in the center, a little bit of both or more housing than rec or more rec than housing, but only a few on those on those ends of the spectrum.
I know the councillor Cone uh has joined us uh remotely, so why don't you announce yourself and then go ahead with your questions?
Yeah, uh, hi, everyone. I'm Paige.
Frozen.
Thank you for the uh presentation. I just wanna ask, uh, there are three different tests you called, right, A, B, C, E, and then uh you show um in your present that there are some issues with um affordable housing. So which one, uh, which test is the best uh solution for that uh problem? Have you done anything um to understand that or they are two different things?
I think the question, just to make sure I'm clear, was um, do any of these represent something that's more affordable or less affordable in terms of the housing?
Yeah, because we have, yeah, right, we have um affordable housing issue in our town. So doing test A or test C will be the, maybe a solution for that. It it did, have you done anything about it? If you haven't done, it's okay.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. I think it's a great question. Um. And we're writing these down because if you're asking it, someone else might be asking it too. So we want to have, we want to be prepared. So it's really helpful. Um, I wouldn't say we've looked at that question specifically, and these don't get at the affordability question per se. Like you kind of said at the end, is it not really comparing apples to apples with that? And that's true. That being said, um, what we know about the housing crisis is that we have a um housing shortage at all price points. And what's happening is that there's a crunch on a lot of housing products because even if you're building a multimillion dollar house, which we're not proposing here, but you had something like that. Someone's gonna buy that instead of buying up the four bedroom, three bedroom, middle income house that more people need. So you create supply, the supply is going to help your affordability problem. So on that general principle, max housing might be your best solution. That being said, it's very much going to depend on the developer, because again, this is not there's a, there's not a scenario in my mind at this stage in winter that I would say the city should be the developer of the housing. More than likely, you're going to subdivide and a piece of this is going to go to a developer, put it out for an RFP with specifications of what the city's looking for. And that developer is going to build the product that you're looking for or or may propose something within a range. And so it could be that test C is just as affordable in terms of producing affordable housing stock because the developer might come forward with a plan that shows the majority of all of that housing to be affordable housing stock. So a little bit will be to be determined. That's a really good question. We've dotted that down. So thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. I had a couple of thoughts. One had to do with the the method of like getting word out to people and uh I I know that the city and the school district are two different entities, but if you could get the all the teachers to send things home with the kids from school, that would not only expand the reach, but also get the, hopefully get younger people uh out since uh people my age aren't, don't have kids in the schools, but younger people, they do.
Okay, perfect. Yep.
With with regard to, I I noticed uh in in reading through the comments that people made at the meetings or sub or submitted later, there were um a number of comments relating to where the uh recreation center should go and whether whether we should be putting it on this property at all, or whether we should be uh doing some kind of adaptation of the uh of the gym up at Vermont College of Fine Arts. And I understand that your mandate has sort of been expanded to also look at the VCFA property. And so uh, may maybe not, uh, that's.
Not exactly. Um.
Okay.
But continue and I'll I'll circle back to that.
And so, so the question uh is one of the questions about recreation is have you have you looked at whether uh the uh gymnasium building or fitness building at uh VCFA is a reasonable uh prospect for a new recreation center for the city?
Yes, okay, that's your question. Yeah, yeah. So we um yeah, we haven't been necessarily brought in to look at that per se. Um, but we have had some preliminary conversations to see what what might be possible there in terms of if they, if it's still available, if it's, you know, if it's available on the market. Um, those conversations are ongoing. I don't have any, I don't have any conclusions on that right now. But I would say that one of the questions we have, you know, about that property is, would it be suitable for what's needed? Is it possible to convert? Is there this, you know, is the infrastructure of the building such that it would support what's needed? Um, and I don't have an answer to that either, even if it was available. And the question is, you know, is it available for um, purchase or have those conversations proceeded? So I don't, I don't have an answer for that, but it's a concurrent conversation the city is having, I would say.
Thanks. And with regard to the to another, another recreation related question in the in the hybrid model, which I think was uh model C, um does that the provide enough room for the ki- the kind of modernized uh recreation facility that we're uh looking for?
So that that's a great question. The the footprint and the kind of I wouldn't go so far as even calling it a blueprint, the kind of overall concept that was used for the test C and and for test B um building wise came from the recreation center and the recreation center or the rec department, I mean, came um up with kind of a this would be what's ideal um from from that, from their perspective. And so max recreation in particular has all the elements. Um, test C, the balance does not. It has um, you know, less rec fields, for example, than would be ideal. But that was kind of our 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 starting point. But more research is needed too about what exactly is needed for recreation um for the community. And so this was really a starting point for the community to respond to.
Okay, thanks. And Carrie?
Um, yeah, I guess I kind of have a follow up on that about the um you said that the the recreation department gave you information that you used to for the test plan that had recreation in it. And I'm wondering if if that's in this hundred and nine page document that we got somewhere. Um, I didn't see it.
You didn't read every word of every page, Carrie. Um, no, it's not. No, you you're you're
Okay.
You're astute to point out it's not in there. This was a, this came out of conversation. We had several conversations with the rec department.
And and some, was some of the, did the public input inform any of that at all as well or or was?
Not specifically what's on the plans shown yet. Again, we're starting kind of with the with the highest and and factoring in some of the elements that a lot of the elements that were in that uh recommendation from the rec department do capture what was mentioned in the community because it included everything. Yeah, it included almost everything that that folks have been saying.
Hey, Donna.
Um, Stephanie, I'm a visual person and the three scenarios of your test sketches went by too too fast because they weren't in the attachment. So I will have a lot more once I see that, but it comes back to the questions of you're gathering information and you said you use the Montclair Rec Department. And they gave us some scenarios before we obtained the purchase of the Country Club. And we did a lot of surveying of what was needed when we looked at the Berry Street Rec renovations. So I'm assuming you have all of that.
I I don't think I do. I think what we have, what was given to me was from the rec department of the most recent, I would say, um culmination of that. And maybe is, I don't know, Bill, if Arnie is there um in the room.
Yes, so he may have some iteration was.
I mean, it'd be nice if we had dates for all the sketches they provided us before we got in.
And weren't those not in the packet? I thought we've provided those sketch.
Okay. Yeah, mine version, yeah. Well, I don't have, you online version? Okay, I have to be open. Thank you.
Because I'm a visual person too, Donna.
And 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 before you get into that, my other question, which you can think about why uh Arnie's talking is I was curious as to who you've been talking to outside of of the city, like, are there land developers or housing developers that you just had in casual conversations of what they felt as far as a balance of trying to mix dense housing with single housing um? And, you know, and any other groups that were interested in the uses of the property. Is that happening now or is that going to be at one of the other stages?
I'll think about that and Arnie can speak to the rec.
Yeah. Hi, Arnie McMullin from the Recreation Department. Testing, okay.
Speak right into them.
Arnie from the Recreation Department. Yeah, they asked me for an idea of what we were looking at for a footprint for a com- and let's let's change the name from Recreation Center to Community Center. Because one of the things we don't want to do is outgrow um a possible facility um before we even get started. I mean, when you look at community type buildings, you want to look fifty to a hundred years into the future because this is stuff that's going to be used far beyond my time here. Um, but one of the things we wanted to make sure we included was an indoor walking track because as people spoke, we have an aging community. A lot of seniors can't walk outside in the wintertime and people with access issues can't either. Um, so this would provide that, but we're trying to look for multiple space use gyms, you know, having um you know, two or three basketball courts so we could think about in the future AAU tournaments, which bring a lot of people to a community. Um, talk about economic opportunities for businesses. Um, you know, and different things like that and many other core functions that we do, like our youth basketball program. Um, we're struggling right now just to have space for our youth basketball program because it is more challenging to use some of the other facilities in the city. So, you know, part of what we want to make sure we do is we don't outgrow it in the first year. Um, I did give them a ballpark square footage, but you know, it depends how big you want to make the footprint, whether you go out or up. Um, but it does include community rooms um and other types of things that you would use in a community center for possibly even having a community dinners if you wanted to do something like that. And we also talked about that this could also be a um, an emergency space. So if, you know, there was an issue, you have an emergency shelter that's certainly out of the floodplain, which not a lot of all of our facilities are. So, um, you know, so those are some things we're trying to think about of all the possible uses um that a community center could use and also for senior programming. You know, so they're they have a very tight space where they are right now. Um. So.
So I think part of the question from council member B was when we were looking at this two, three years ago. And we ultimately, at that point, we're going to renovate the rec center. We did a community survey of what people wanted to see in a rec center. You remember that?
Yep.
And so the question is, is that feedback include, was that provided?
That's correct. Yeah, we included what was part of that. We just.
So that was all given to, that was given to the consultant.
Yep.
Well, and likewise, in that discussion, we talked about, you know, exercise rooms, but chair, space for childcare. And and so I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's going to be the um a link behind her drawing so we know where your mindset is now with the bigger picture. But I'd love to have a comprehensive.
Not not to interrupt, but I think the 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 specific uses of the space is something that's, you know, we're we're a little behind that right now. It's sort of the massing, you just if we'd have this much area for rec and then what went in it and who ran it and how that all worked would be something we'd we'd move toward. So I I, childcare I know has been a huge need identified.
Yeah, I'm only concerned in thinking of those in as much as they're included in the footprint. That's all. That's all. Thank you.
And they did also mention the e- existing building, which has childcare in it now, would be a potential. Not being.
Not big enough.
You could be right. I don't know. Um. Arnie, I'll ask you the same question that I asked Stephanie about the Vermont College Gym and whether you have looked at that and have any thoughts?
Uh, honestly, I spent uh about three years on that campus. Um, I uh did my uh did my time at Norwich. I graduated from there and uh I was a gym supervisor at Vermont College at the time when they had that. And that really, you're not trading much. You're actually going a lateral move. So if you want to see, in my opinion, if you want to see recreation grow and to create a real community center, I don't think that's a space that's going to do it for you.
Great, thanks.
It's about the same size as the current gym right now.
That that I think that's a, I'd heard that from someone. Carrie?
Yeah, question about the scope of this this work that the consultants are doing because um you had mentioned that there, you you were under the person that there's scope had expanded to include looking at the, is that correct?
No, no, we hired them to do this project. I don't is part of the feedback with VCFA was, excuse me, this site, they were people in the community that said, should we look at VCFA? And we convened a conversation. Their firm is also doing VCFA, so that may be where the confusion is that, so they
Right, okay.
So, um, and so they've kind of done the Chinese, you know, the firewall between um doing that. So we convened a conversation just to see what was available, but I know Stephanie's not working on that project at all.
Yeah, not it, not me.
And David's not working on our project. So they're split up. So I think that might be where the confusion is. We did have a conversation about where it was at. Um, and at that point, that our thinking about what was needed wasn't far enough along to really make a, you know, so I think to the Stephanie's state. far enough along to really make a, you know, so I think to the Stephanie's statement that, um, there were, that there are ongoing conversations, we're open to it, but we're not really, that's not what we're focusing.
So I wanted to get back to Counselor Bates', um, question. Uh, you asked about other land developers, if other, um, housing developers have opined or anything, we have not gone that far yet. That feels a little premature at this stage again. Because if the, um, community comes back saying, we really want like more rec and really keep that housing super confined to just the very, um, entrance to the site, for example, that will very much dictate what can be done. And a lot of what a developer is going to look at is available acreage and what is available, you know, and where is that going to be located? And I think your point is that they could provide a perspective about how the uses um, kind of interface, that, you know, how do you, how do you bring the two together? And that's why we have the HB on, because VHB does the land planning for developers. I mean, they, that's what they do. Um, and so a developer would actually use VHB to do the land planning. And so we're using them to help us envision what that would look like. So these are three scenarios. Obviously two extremes and one in the middle that show how those things could interface. And then we'll kind of, where I think we're probably going to end up is somewhere on that spectrum and it's going to be about the dial and how do you bring those things together? And then this next phase is really, stage is really going to be pulling in, well, there's all these elements we also want. Solar array or, um, you know, skate park or dog park, you know, how do we incorporate all of that? And, and accommodate it within this space.
Well, yes, and I, I understand the timing, but I do think there's an advantage for you, you having in your repertoire the information that a Realtor like has as well as land developers on what people look for and what, what happens when you start mixing dense housing, whether it's condos or duplexes with singles housing. That's all. I was just thinking that when we then reach for the stars, we have somebody standing there saying, well, there is this market pattern for people. This is what we found. Cause luckily we've had a lot of local developers develop in housing recently. And so I would think they would have a lot of experience we could gain from.
Donna, I'm sorry, Lauren, I'm sorry. Looking right at you.
Yeah, I mean, a, a lot of the questions I had, um, have been asked. I mean, I think it's notable that it looks like it really simplifies things that you're really centering the rec at the existing building, that that looks like a usable building, like there's not multiple places where maybe putting a rec center would be appropriate. So like in a lot of ways, the designs look very scalable and like you could do like a little more housing. And it looks like there's a lot of sites that are appropriate for housing, which is really exciting, um, that there's a number of configurations. So, I mean, I think in a lot of ways, this really narrows the questions for the community in a really nice way. So I'm excited to see that, that like we can really get to the crux of like, what's that balance? Um, between housing and rec and, um, you know, making this just a great site that's meeting a lot of community needs ideally. So, I mean, overall, I'm just kind of eager to get the community feedback. Um, I know we've talked about it before, but, um, the Social and Economic Justice Committee, I know that there were some, um, you know, questions raised about how to make sure we're like reaching as many people as possible. I think that group would continue to be, um, interested and, you know, if you want to join one of our meetings, um, even at eight AM. Uh, and happy to invite you and do some brainstorming of reaching some of those harder to reach communities, um, to get some of that feedback and really, um, put that into this process. But really, really great to see all this and appreciative of all the work that's clearly.
Yeah, thank you. And you, you highlighted a point I didn't get a chance to say, which is, um, you're right that the, that the natural resources themselves and the opportunities and constraints of the site itself does dial in, um, where development can happen. And it was the recommendation of the land planners that you do put your recreation down centered where kind of the existing infrastructure is. Because again, if you're having, you know, more people visit the site than live there because they're visiting the recreation, you don't want them driving through your neighborhoods and your, your small streets to get to the rec center. Um, so that made a lot of sense. And I think, um, to answer your other point, we did, yeah, we were consulting, as you know, with CJC in the fall, and that was very informative to, um, some of their recommendations for just city procedure in general. Informed some of that list, very long list of the different ways we're trying to do outreach, but we're still open to other suggestions. This is, um, you know, a multiple week, month long stage. And there's an opportunity in the spring to do this again. So it's always process improvement.
Uh, thanks, Bailey.
Yeah, thank you. I was, uh, wondering what will happen, uh, old Recreation Center buildings? If they decided to move this new, uh, place, is there any plan about it? We will keep it like, again, recreation buildings or there will be a plan to turn them into a housing.
So I, I would say that is an open question. There's no, you know, we have had a lot of discussion about possible uses for that building, uh, including keeping it as recreation, including using it for uh, some facility for the homeless community to, you know, housing. Uh, and I think we would probably undergo a similar, perhaps not, it wouldn't have to be as long because we wouldn't have all the natural resources inventory thing. But I think we would probably do another community process, um, but certainly there's some urgent needs. Uh, so my thought would be as soon as we make a decision about what we're going to do. And say the, say for the sake of discussion that that decision involved proposing and building a rec center at Country Club Road. You know, that process in itself, you know, then designing, building, getting funding is going to take a year or two constructing it. So while, while we're preparing for that move, we would then be preparing. Uh, so we would be, we wouldn't be wasting time. So we could know immediately what was going to happen to that building. You know, that building has a huge amount of challenges. It has asbestos, it's not accessible. Uh, it's, it's, it's a funky old building. So, you know, there, I think there would be a serious question, it should be evaluated whether reuse, attempted to re-adaptive reuse of that building makes sense. Or, you know, whether it be taken down or just rebuilt, uh, into something new and, you know, more suitable to what the future needs would be.
Thank you.
Donna.
Uh, now, in the packet that I did find was the, uh, discussion about the existing building, the old Els Club building. Are we discussing that tonight?
Um, can, I mean, clarifying questions about that assessment?
I, I think we totally can, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure. You, you have questions, questions or observations?
Well, I, there, I mean, I guess I was looking for observations from Stephanie's group and from Black River as to, you know, just sort of going over this so that the council and the public both have it in their minds.
Yeah, I mean, Jim or Mike, um, could probably give you the, the two minute spiel of, of overview so that you have the, the context and then you could bore into some specific questions if that's helpful.
I, I would prefer that.
That'd be great, yes.
Um, Jim or Mike?
I don't.
I don't know really where to start, except that our general conclusion is that the building that's there is in actually quite good shape. Um, it lends it, I mean, as we wrote in our existing conditions report, there are some uses it doesn't lend itself to so well. Um, for example, housing, because the amount of interior volume to the amount of exterior wall where you could have windows is not a very good ratio. Um, and it wouldn't be very good for, you couldn't do like a, like a gym where there's ball games or something like that. Cause there's not any spaces with enough ceiling height. But that said, there's a lot of other things you could do that could be potential uses in a community center, including sort of, um, health workout type spaces or community meeting rooms or catering facilities or commercial office space, um, daycare, there, there's any number of things that could go in there. And it's, as they say, there's, there's a, quite a lot of retained value in the building from, from what we've observed.
And we could do, we could do a lot of that with, well, essentially retaining the shell and just configuring what the inside of the building, uh, looks like.
It's pretty flexible that way because it is actually a steel frame, um, with, you know, sort of non-bearing partitions in it. So it's, it's not like an old wood house or something where, you know, all the walls are holding up the floors above. And so there, there's a fair amount of flexibility with, you know, not unlimited, but, but quite, quite, quite good. I don't know, Mike, did, did I miss anything or?
No, well, for me you didn't, but anyway, thank you. But my other, my other question then, again, it's part of the process. When the hub expressed interest in perhaps creating a public-private partnership, we talked about that we might need to reach out into the community to see if other groups are interested. Do, do you foresee something in the future that we would be doing that as part of this act of looking at not only this building, but seeing if indeed there were other organizations in the community that wanted to join us? Right, yes. Other aspects.
My, my other comment would be as if it helps maybe raise money or, or get some, some funding, it might be an avenue to look at. I don't know how you would go about it exactly, but sorry Stephanie, I don't know if I could.
That's okay. Yeah, no, we, yeah, we, where that falls in the process, Donna, I'm not a hundred percent right now. Um, because again, it's so hard to predict the process when the pub, we want the public to guide the process. So we can't predict what the public will say. Um, again, what if, what if the response was, yeah, we, we need five hundred units. Like, I don't care about, you know, this, let's put recreation elsewhere, that little existing building can be converted into something. But otherwise, you know, I don't think, I don't know that that's out of the realm of possibility. I really just don't. Um, and so that would then dictate those kinds of conversations. So I would say it's in the process though, and it could even be a, a phase two recommendation. Again, if you've got this area designated for rec, how is that going to be programmed? It's going to be a pretty detailed analysis that's outside of the scope of this phase because it's also incorporating revenue streams and looking at, um, programming and different kinds of cross pollination. It's going to be really important. You mentioned daycare, for example. Now you've got a, you know, another private user, but is it also somehow related to a co-housing you, use of some sort? If you had a developer come forward with, from the RFP process, you know, that wanted to make use of that, you know, so there's a lot of different iterations. We want to be open.
You, and, and it's your own fault, you know, all of you. I mean, you've done such a great job of presenting so many ideas. We want to think the next step and the next step. So you have to contain us, but we don't want to lose these ideas either. So thank you.
That's been my life for the last four months. Absolutely. I hear you.
I have to say that one of, I was very encouraged at seeing the, uh, the analysis of the, of the real estate and seeing that there's not major impediments to do a significant amount of housing and other development that we want to see while still retaining a good amount of open space and, uh, environmental protection. So I think that that given, given that we got into the, uh, purchase uh, fairly quickly to have it be, have, have you come back and say, well, this looks like a space that really can be put to use for the, the range of possibilities that the people of Montpelier want is very encouraging to me.
I think you bring up a, a great point. Um, and I wanted to highlight that, you know, in the natural resources assessment, what we've done is inventory what's there. And, um, while what we've highlighted as buildable areas are based on a lot of, um, you know, topography and staying out of buffers, there are still some elements we should, you know, make sure we're um, flagging for the next phase, which is basically when we get a land idea in mind, then we have to look further, deeper at the impacts. And so, um, for example, primary ag soils is going to be one of the things that gets impacted. If, you know, if we're doing building on, on primary ag soils. Um, one of the complications of a project like this is it's not a straightforward, where a lot of times you have a parcel of land and there's a desired use, um, of, the hospital comes in and says, we need a medical clinic here. It needs to be this many square foot, square feet. Tell us what the impacts are and we'll mitigate them or look through the permitted locations. In this case, um, we're doing it a bit iteratively here and almost in reverse. So it's telling us, okay, we think we can do this. Let's see what we want to build. And then we have to go back though and test it against permit regulations. We have to get approvals for that. Um, so when I said like the actionable master plan is not necessarily the final land plan, that's because there's additional steps that will need to be taken to make sure that these things are doable and completely feasible. But you can't go all the way down that path until you know what you want to build. So we're running into a bit of chicken and egg, um, as it goes with master planning.
Okay, thanks. Um, if people in the council are satisfied, I'll open it up to questions from the public, uh, starting with people in the room. Steve and then.
Uh, Steve Walker. I only heard mention from the, I guess he was Black River Design, uh, is that David?
Jim Drummond.
Jim, uh, that was the only mention I heard of having, uh, potential, um, I forget what word he used, but the idea of commercial space, workshop space, so that people could actually live and earn a living on the same property. I think we're, we're treading far afield to imagine that we're gonna patrol or electric everybody from Montpelier up to this site to, to recreate. It's, it's a transportation nightmare, even for the people who want to, you know, buy a lot there. So the idea of making that space somewhat self-reliant for food or men, or work, uh, without so much travel, uh, would give us the benefits of the economic development. Uh, possibly we could allow, I mean, if it's, if it's designed to accommodate some of the older folks and have housing, affordable housing for caregivers, maybe that'll free up some of the big, big houses that only have, you know, one person in a four bedroom home in Montpelier. Uh, but we, we need to think about making it attractive to, for both of those functions. Elderly care, caregivers and people who want to live and work nearby. And I didn't hear much of any of that, uh, in these early concepts. But I'm sure you're doing a good job. Keep it up.
Thanks. Um, okay, Ethan.
My same question, whether there's any thought of any commercial space.
Okay.
Same, same.
Okay, thanks. Looking at people online, um, I have to see Emma Zavas up first.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Emma Zavas, um, resident of Montpelier. Um, so as I was looking at the, the sketches, I was, um, curious. And I think a lot of city counselors have asked questions about sort of the recreation and what went into that. Um, but I was curious if the consultant could speak a little bit more to sort of the, the fields or designs. Like what was put sort of onto those maps? Cause I, I feel like I don't have a really good sense of like what, um, what is, is needed or wanted and sort of why we selected these fields or the science building or that type of thing. And I think, um, sort of to follow up on that, like, I really appreciated the data that Josh shared on sort of the housing affordability crisis in Montpelier. Um, and I would love to like become more informed about sort of recreation needs in Montpelier. Like, um, if there's been an analysis of like, what are our recreation needs and where are the gaps? You know, like what is the difference between like what we need versus want? Um, you know, where like, are, you know, are people not able to, to schedule basketball games? And kids like are literally not playing who want to play, um, or, you know, are all of those kids able to play, but we wish, we, we want it to be on a different kind of court or something like that. So I just wish I had sort of more of a, um, insights into, to, to the landscape that we have now and, and what are needs, what are gaps versus wants kind of. So if anyone can speak to that, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor McCullough, do you want me to respond? I, I can wait till you.
Yes, please do.
Okay, um, thank you, Emma. And I actually remember you from our meeting and your comment in particular. Cause I, that stood out for me, um, in a big way because, um, I, I kind of felt, feel the same way in my own community. Um, and so your, your question is well taken. It is a piece of this stage. It's, it's actually happening as we speak. I would say this is, this is the stage this is happening. Um, we got the rec template as we talked about, I'll call it the template that we used to, to mock up and to mass out the site from the Rec Department based on their data. Um, I do not have that backup data, but it sounds like it's something I. Um, I do not have that backup data, but it sounds like it's something I could get, so that's going to be, it's on my list now to get that, um, to understand where those recommendations came from, but being that Arnie is part of our team, that's just, that's where the data came from in terms of trying to come up with a template of, of a possible footprint for it. The programming though, as you're talking about kind of dialing into that is still TBD. And the reason for that is because, again, we don't know from the community what it is that we need, and I, I think what you're, what you're really bringing home is something we keep kind of circling around, which is who, I'm going to name the question, it's like, who decides this is what we need? And the truth could be said, the same could be said about the housing. And there's probably, there's not one answer, right? There's not one solution at all, um, on either side of this. And so what this is going to come down to is trying to get from this process as much feedback as possible to see if there are kind of, there are, there is consensus, and one of the exercises we're going to be doing in the public meetings is to look for consensus, we've kind of got this exercise planned where people get up and actually interact with the maps to be able to, um, and, and I say get up, because there's one or two onsite options, there's also a virtual option, people are going to do this virtually as well. But, um, provide their input about where certain types of uses should go and what kind of uses, you know, do we want more multi-family? You know, what is the community want? And so that is what this, this kind of process is, is what is the community asking for? Um, as we get more granular on that, I think that starts to exceed the capacity of a, of a land development team, and it gets into programming and specific to recreation, which is not, you know, why I was hired, it's not my specialty at all, but, um, there may be the need, once we've identified that this is the proper area for it, this feels like the right balance. What are those exact needs and how do you justify them? I think is your question, like, how do you, how do you quantify those needs and identify what those gaps are? And it's not, um, an exercise in anecdotal evidence necessarily, but, but what are the real, what is the real data? I hope, I hope that answered your question in terms of process, so thanks.
Uh, thanks, Stephanie, uh. Joe Castlano, hi Joe, thanks for coming.
Oh, well, thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, just fine.
Okay, and, uh, oh, I'm center screen now, okay. Uh, well, I want to thank you so much for all the detailed information. I was just able to quickly glance at everything. Uh, one of the things I want to, uh, suggest to Stephanie and to the city councils, Bill, as we're moving forward, I mean, certainly there's some members of the public are going to be more engaged than others in the process. And I know that you're trying to do as much community outreach and get public feedback and input. So you can best design something that fits the needs of the community. Um, couple of things I would also stress that maybe we also look at demographic data to help drive some of the decisions. Because as Josh pointed out in one of the slides, we are an aging population, and at one point there was a downsized this group of about a hundred people. And all of us have not gotten any younger, and we're all in these big houses, pretty much one or two people. Kids have either moved out or we never had kids, and now we're looking for something on a single level. And then some of us are on fixed incomes, low incomes. So I'm looking at, maybe we look at some sort of over fifty-five housing segment as a portion of the housing. Or even maybe a co-housing, so you bring in younger families who are having challenges affording something in town with, and have elder around, so you'll have a nice mix in a, in a more vibrant community. That was all I had to say.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Um, Stan Brinkerhoff.
Uh, thank you, Jack, Stan Brinkerhoff from Montpelier. I've got two, two quick questions, um. The first one is, in, in the maximal recreation space diagram, there's, there's no housing. Uh, but in the opposite diagram, um, there's, there's lots for houses, right? Not, not, um, condos or duplex style buildings. Um, if we look at the average revenue of a Montpelier household at around seventy thousand dollars in the last census, um, and kind of the, the price, the square footage price to build houses for families. Um, have we thought all about the maximal design being more completely, um, shared houses or condos or duplexes? Um, the second question is, if we look at that maximal housing at five hundred units, and we use Josh's data of two point two people per household, and we add fifteen hundred people uh, to the country club property, that seems to move kind of the center of gravity of where people live in town. You know, fifteen percent of the population now lives outside of, of the downtown. Um, is there any concern about, and maybe it's come up in a later phase, is there any concern about utility, um, fire, ambulance, police? Um, is there a cascading effect where we need an extra fire engine and we don't have space for it any longer? Uh, those, just two questions, thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Stephanie, are you considering?
I do have one comment, yeah. Sorry, um, I just wanted to say you should, you should be a master planner, Stan, because you're thinking of all the things that you do have to think about. So to your second question first, um, absolutely. If, you know, this is shifting toward, whatever this is shifting toward, is going to have multiple impacts. And one of those could be, you know, services, they could be, they're going to be utilities, there're going to be other infrastructure, the transit question comes up a bunch, so. As this, you know, if it were only ten units versus five hundred units, that very much shifts how much you have to focus on um, those elements, but those are elements that will need to be baked in. They might be baked in, in phase two, or maybe part of recommendations for phase one. But what your point is in the first question is, um, well, actually, no, I guess it's still part of the second question, is really that's something that the public needs to consider as we look at maybe concept plans in the next stage where we're comparing concept plans one, two, and three. We expect to come back with kind of some, um, I'm not going to call them pros and cons, because we're not going to opine on the, on the quality of these, but you know, the, the trade-offs and the different, um, constraints and things that are going to impact. If you get, if you do this, it's going to cost you this, and it may be a cost for, you know, an actual financial cost, it may be an opportunity cost. Um, and maybe, you know, just other types of costs that we're not thinking of, but is that worth it for what you're looking for? So those are absolutely big considerations to be, to be taken into account. Um, the first question being, can we consider moving single family into multi-family? Possibly, you know, the max family housing model was shown to show that there could be a variety of different product types, because that's what was really came forward a lot in the meetings with the public is lots of different type of product, because there's lots of, they wanted, um, a lot of people wanted a, a price point for a lot of people, so that you're not just having a site that's only in a low income or only high income, you know, that you have a mix of people on, on a, on a property. But, you know, absolutely during the public engagement phase right now, one of those exercises we're talking about in the public, um, interaction is to specify for those buildable areas, what would you put there? If you want multi-family, stick a pin in it, because that's what we want to hear. So thank you for that question.
I can respond quickly to the second part too, um, and this would need to be updated, but a number few years back, we did a, we had an economist do a study for the city about services, and the conclusion was up to about two thousand more residents. I mean, it didn't get, depending where they were and all that, um, was really not going to have a major impact on on the various things, particularly, um, you know, if this is multi-family housing, uh, it's all going to be required to be sprinkled, so, you know, while we certainly have fire response, we wouldn't necessarily need to add more fire trucks and those kinds of things, because it would be sort of built-in fire protection in the buildings, um, you know, the crime rate, uh, is probably not, you know, a new neighborhood isn't necessarily certainly going to result in a whole new crime rate, it's going to be the same folks that live here already, so it would be whatever evolution of needs and those services, uh, you know, the schools, uh, at least presently, um, the formula for school funding is, you know, the more students you have, the more money you make, so, uh, and I, I at, the schools at one point had the capacity for it for a little while, they, they were growing, but I, I think now the school population's leveled off a bit, so they last I knew, and I assume it would be part of this, is to determine, you know, their take on what's a sort of an excess, acceptable level of influx of students before they need to talk about new facilities and those kinds of things.
Thanks, Bill.
Um, Phyllis.
Okay, well. Um, I'm trying to get my, trying to get set up here, very good. Thank you very much, um. I, uh, was attending another meeting by Zoom, so I, uh, only came in mid-stream, I missed Josh's presentation. And I was not able to find the packet online, so I have not viewed it yet in my, the very quick uh, viewing of the three, uh, options, uh, I, I certainly need to study them more. I'd like to, um, just for a moment, step back and remember when we had, when the city first had the vision of purchasing the country club property. And there were discussions at the time about how this was a unique opportunity for the city to acquire such a large tract of, of land, um, both open fields and, and forested land, and there was a lot of excitement about the city acquiring this unique parcel. I, I participated in a number of meetings, and I know that there's been the, the tension between recreation, conservation and housing, and I certainly support a plan that would have some low and affordable housing, uh, available, um. I'm quite dismayed to, th- that the consultants' plans are so um, drastic on either, on, on the two far ends that, to propose five hundred and thirteen units, um, and, and, and the number of streets, and, and, and I, I heard the consultant say that there had not yet been a wildlife corridor assessment, there had not yet been a traffic study. And, um, I, I think that these are very important. Perhaps the fire department can deal with another two thousand people, but, uh, that number of cars on the road, um, would create a, a very different commute on the very Montpelier road. Um, I have heard a lot of talk this evening about, uh, recreation in terms of a recreation facility, and I haven't heard anything about outdoor recreation, and I, I'm sure that the city councillors are well aware that last year there were volunteers from Onion River uh, Nordic Ski Club who groomed the ski trails, ski trails at the, uh, country club property. People are out there walking their dogs, they're out there jogging, walking. And so recreation is not only indoors. And in the, uh, thirty-five plus years that I've lived in Montpelier, anyone who's moved here, I've always told that person, you need to find your winter sport. And certainly some people might play basketball year-round, but you don't love winter if you're indoors playing basketball. You love winter when you're outdoors, cross-country skiing or ice skating or, or, or animal tracking, whatever it might be, that's the love of winter. Outdoor recreation brings in tourism money. It brings people who live in, 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 you know, outlying areas into the city so that they can recreate outdoors, and I, I, I don't know how much consideration there has been of the positive impact of outdoor recreation. And just the last thing I'll, I'd say is that, um, that I would hope that there would be a consideration of, uh, not breaking up that property with all of those roads, even in the low housing model, the balanced model, there are so many roads. And, um, and I look forward to the ongoing public discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Phyllis. Um, Stephanie, I know from reading the report that there was discussion of, uh, outdoor recreation. Do you want to talk a little bit about that as, uh, in response to the comment?
Absolutely, yep. Um, no, outdoor recreation is absolutely as much a consideration here as indoor rec. Um, in the plans, there's, you know, there shows the different types of outdoor rec spaces. Again, haven't gotten into any programming on those, exactly what that outdoor rec looks like is going to be very much dependent on community input. Um, but that was absolutely considered, especially in what Arnie provided us in terms of that footprint and that template. And the importance of that, we also met extensively with both parks and recreation departments, but Parks Department especially, talking about um, the importance of continuing the U thirty-two trail, um, showing continuity of that and, and possibly accommodating all of it on this site. You can see that mapped on those sheets themselves.
Thanks, Stephanie. Um, is there anyone else who has any questions or comments they'd like to make before we wrap this up? Sure, if you can keep it brief.
Yeah, it's brief, um. The relationship of this property plan process to the downtown master plan. And I know that our, the outdatedness of our downtown plan has been an issue in revising zoning. Uh, it's been subject to several meetings, and might our recreation needs be handled in a distributed fashion? Some of it in Vermont College. I, I'm a firm believer that the liquor, the state's liquor building could be stored anywhere, and that's a great building to use as a rec center, uh, so it is in the floodplain. But my point is that we, we need to kind of think of this in a more holistic fashion and not let one need of a pent-up demand for recreation, uh, to define the site for elk, rather than look at what our other options are, even in the distributed manner. I bet there's pieces of Vermont College that would serve that well, and there's potentially the high school liquor building down there too, so I just, I want to understand how these different planning processes sequence or fit together. Is this thing going to move slow enough to where the city's downtown plan catches up? I think it's been back burner. Um, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Anyone else who wants to be heard on this evening's discussion before we wrap up? Nothing from you, Bill?
I'm sure Stephanie's going to get to it, but just then a reminder that the next steps from this are three more sessions, but I will turn that to the team to tell you all about that.
As I say, okay, come see us, um, come see us on the twenty-eighth, we're meeting on the site itself, all of this is right on the website, it's blasted in every forum we can find, um, but again, twenty eighth is on the site itself, uh, on the second, February second, um, at night, six to eight o'clock, right there in city chambers, um. We'll be having another meeting that will also be hybrid like this one, and then on the ninth, from noon to two is a virtual, all virtual session. So if you want to attend a meeting, if that's something that someone, you know, especially someone you know, a neighbor, a friend who's looking to get involved, please send them there, otherwise you can send them to the website and the city's YouTube channel, um, will have a five-minute video. It's not a TikTok, I will say, I was very tempted to learn what TikTok really is in order to do one, to get more engagement, but I'm not that clever, um, and so we have this video that'll kind of be a lot of what you heard tonight, packed into five minutes and giving just the little teasers, so people can go to the materials themselves, dive in a little more, and then take the survey. And we're hoping we'll get a good turnout from the survey, and our plan is to come back and meet with you in March and recap what we've heard. And start to, and ask some questions, it'll kind of depend on what we hear, uh, what we're going to be asking you, but in March, um, end of March, I think the twenty-second is our target date to meet with you again, to go through what we're planning for the concept planning phase uh, stage within this, this last bit here over the spring.
Great, thanks a lot, Stephanie, this is great.
Thank you so much, look forward to seeing everybody.
Sometime, it'll be in person, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, that, uh, wraps up item six, Country Club Rose presentation. I don't believe we have anything, uh, to take up under other business, um, city council reports.
I have nothing, very, very pleased with the presentation, thank you.
No report from me tonight.
Okay, the one thing I will take up in my portion of the city council. Okay, the one thing I will take up in my portion of the city council reports is that tomorrow is 2023 Homeless Awareness Day. And there will be a big event at at the State House with a variety of things happening throughout the day. And so if you have the opportunity to be there, I encourage you to do that. I'm sorry. Oh, Palin, sorry. I didn't see your hand up. But do you have anything to say, Palin?
It's okay. I don't have anything to share. Thank you for the presentation.
Thanks. John, do you have anything? No clerks report, no city managers approach report. So we can, without objection, we'll conclude the meeting at 8:11 PM. Thank you all.